Next speaker will be Nancy Kleinrock.
Wendy Sumner.
No, I'm sorry. Wendy Sumner, then Nancy, and then...
Chloe Marley.
Chloe Marley.
Good morning. My name is Wendy Sumner, and I wanted to thank the town board for holding this. I live in the town of Hector, and there are two concerns. The first that I wanted to address was the financial question of who's going to pay for fracking. It seems like if you're aware of the health issues, then you really don't need to hear this. But if you're only concerned about money, then I want to know who's going to pay to fix the roads. One gas well requires approximately 1,000 trucks of water to be hauled in and out for each well. Typically, there are six well pads drilled per acre. That's 6,000 large industrial trucks per fracking pad. How many months will it take of these rumbling trucks rumbling in day and night to break down our local roads? If you're only looking at a financial concern, please take this into consideration. Who is going to pay for the new roads? Who's going to pay for the infrastructure? If one well pad requires 6,000 trucks, do the math. A hundred will require 60,000, a thousand, 600,000, and so on. The drivers, don't pull yourself. They're not going to be locally hired. They're going to drive in and out. They're not going to think twice. They're not going to look back. Their truck's going to go in and out of our towns and destroy our roads. Who is going to pay for that? Are we going to pay as taxpayers? No. Exxon, are the gas companies going to pay? We'll see. How many tanker trucks does it take to make one pothole? I have no desire to live in an industrial zone with heavy truck traffic, bright lights, constant diesel engines running, giant drills pounding 24/7. Who will pay for the DEC staff that it will take to regulate the wells? My neighbor has been burning trash for 10 years. Plastic, aluminum, used tampons. We have called the DEC. They have said they will send officers. None have ever come. Who is going to pay for the DEC officers to regulate the frac wells when there are no DEC officers available for my neighbors who are burning trash? I'd like to take the last 30 seconds and offer silence for our neighbor Carl Stiles in Bradford County, PA, who died on January 26th this year of intestinal cancer. Last November, barium and arsenic were found in his blood. He is dead. Thank you.
Chloe Marley?
Should be Nancy.
Oh, yeah. Should have been Nancy.
Is that okay if I'm out of order, since I'm here?
We'll just flip flop. It's all right.
Okay. Thank you, Board, for having us today. I really appreciate your concern and listening to us. My friend Bob Simmons just read a long list of towns and counties that have enacted bans, so I'm not going to go through that. That's what I was going to do. I would like to personally thank Marie. She called me last week. Thank you, Marie, for calling. I've never had a board member call me about anything before, so that was pretty cool. I understand that there's quite a bit of fear. The town seems to be making decisions around fear instead of fact and courage. And I just would like to ask the town to please look over the list of towns who have enacted bans, because you're not alone. You're not standing alone. There are others doing it. So... And I only have one other thing to share with everyone. It's a sacred water song that's been handed to me by elders.
After Nancy, it'll be Jack Vandusen.
Vanderzys.
Vanderzys, I'm sorry, and Larry Riverby.
My name is Nancy Kleinrock, and I live on Stillwell Road in the town of Hector. Others here this morning are laying out the many worrisome specifics of high-volume hydro-fracking. But when this topic comes up in conversation, what it ultimately comes down to is whether or not to let this heavily industrialized mineral extraction practice come in and disrupt our rural landscape and communities, especially given the current state of the technology, the array of dangers, and the deleterious effects on the longstanding and well-paying local jobs and tourism in the tourism and agricultural sectors. Is it the responsibility of the people of Hector to prop up the gas companies at a time when domestic prices for natural gas are at near historic lows, and when those who do lease their lands would receive a commensurately low royalty rate? The welfare and safety of the people where they drill is not the priority of these multinational corporations. I say no. I don't want high-volume hydro-fracking here. And in my comments to the DEC, I ask that New York say no to letting this menace into the state in the first place. But I fear that the state is unlikely to act wisely in this regard. If the state will not protect Hector, then we must protect ourselves. In your comment to the DEC, you on the town board clearly expressed the same concerns that you were hearing this morning. I applaud your words to the DEC, and now is the time to translate them into action. I urge you to institute, first, a moratorium to buy time, and, second, to set to work diligently to prepare, and then to pass a ban that expresses the sentiment of the town. But it is essential to act before permitting begins. I know that you're afraid of potential legal action should you enact a ban, but practically speaking, that is not the concern. A ban now, or a moratorium followed by a ban, would not leave us vulnerable. The Dryden and Middlefield cases will play out over time. If the towns win, then Hector, with a ban in place, would be safe both from hydro-fracking and from legal action by the gas industry. If the plaintiffs win, then Hector can seek other strategies to avoid becoming yet another casualty of the spread of hydro-fracking. But either way, the gas companies will not sue the town, for the legal matter will have been settled. The one path that could indeed open the town up to legal action is to drag our heels and attempt a ban after permitting begins. Let's not make that mistake. We must act now. Dozens of other towns, cities, and counties in New York State have taken these important steps, and Hector should join that list. As I have done before in letters to each of you, I ask that you join with the people of the town to move forward responsibly. As you will hear in the forum on legal issues on February 16 at the Hector Fire Hall, there is a clear legal path forward, and the costs of not taking it are too high. Thank you.
Jack?
Hi. I'm Jack Vanderzys, Grove Road. My family has owned land here for over 200 years. Yeah. We, yeah, we do not want this land to be ruined by fracking. We don't want to see water, our water, not drinkable. Let's look at why, why do people want to frac? They want to frac for economic reasons. Well, the economics is only short term. 20% of all the gas gotten from a well has gotten the first year. After five years, the well is dead. So the town will only benefit for five years from the revenue of gases. How long is the, going to be paying for it? Well, if you pollute your water, people won't be coming here. Our tourist industry will die. Our wineries will go under. The land will not be usable. Nobody will want to live here, because the water isn't drinkable. So, yeah, is that five years of gain worth the lifetime of land not usable? Thank you.
Larry Riverby.
Hello. I'm Larry Riverby, and I've been land poor here since 1976. Came from New York City, and I had perhaps a New York City lawyer's idea about what land was worth and what was valuable at the time. In 1980s, when we tried to stop the Hector land use area from being sold by the government, there was a lot of talk about there shouldn't, how there shouldn't be zoning in the town of Hector, because people who own land should have the right to do what they want with their land, and nobody should interfere. I'm sorry, but I didn't entirely understand that at the time, and don't entirely understand it now, of course. We stopped Hector from being sold. We stopped a few other things from happening. And then in the 1990s, maybe in a burst of self-confidence, I signed an oil and gas lease, because my neighbor signed it, and they put a well on his land, and they're going to take the stuff out from under my land. And I stopped surface activity, so I thought I was fine. But this well has been sitting there now for 10 years on a fantastically muddy dirt road that you folks will never pave, that goes around on both sides of a very flimsy bridge that nobody will ever fix unless the gas company comes in and forces you to. But thanks, no thanks. The land and the water are, to me, more valuable than the rent and the royalties that I might get from that. There's a lot of talk here about the fear of this lawsuit. This lawsuit, according to, one of them anyway, according to the Trummersburg Free Press, has been brought by Philip Ansuch, who is Ansuch Exploration. Philip Ansuch, according to The New Yorker, is 72, has an estimated net worth of $7 billion, according to Forbes. He has made his fortune in oil and gas, real estate, railroads, telecommunications, and sports and entertainment. He is one of the largest landowners in the U.S. and his empire of more than 150 companies. Nearly all privately held is worldwide. In 2002, Fortune named Ansuch the country's greediest executive at the top of a list of corporate chieftains who sold off shares as their companies collapsed, leaving other shareholders to suffer devastating losses. I want to thank the town board for going as far as they did and writing the letter that they did, and I want to suggest that their protection is what we need here. The fear of government interference and landowners' rights is not pertinent any longer. We need your protection and your participation against people who are, shall I say, sickly, greedy, like Mr. Ansuch. And if you're worried about lawyers, there's enough of us out there in the town of Hector who can take the cost off of you. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Denise Teeter, Peter Berger, Joseph Tamburelli.
Hi. I am Denny Teeter of Logan Road, town of Hector. We moved to Logan Road in 1970, drawn by the appeals of the national forest as a big backyard. One of the most beautiful of the Finger Lakes, the back roads, and features to explore. The rural atmosphere, the peace and tranquility, that sense of community. And that is why I'm still living on Logan Road 40-plus years later, and why I do not want to have my community, my neighborhood, forever changed by the inevitable ravages of hydro-fracking. As a senior citizen now, I do not want to contend with the health and safety risks that have occurred in other areas, such as Dimmock. I do not want to contend with the horrible influx of heavy truck traffic and obvious risks such traffic poses for Hector residents on their way to work or to a child's basketball game. I do not want to contend with the increased noise. I do not want to burden my neighbors, who devote many hours volunteering to fight fires and assisting us in medical and other emergencies, with dealing with potentially serious situations stemming from the entire hydro-fracking process. I want to encourage, continue to encourage folks to attend the Logan Bazaar, for example, to enjoy a historic building with the backdrop of forest and tranquility. I want my grandchildren to enjoy some of the same experiences that my children had in this community. I want neighbors whose health is failing to look forward to the continuing pleasures of backyard birds and deer, and a good supply of good water and healthful fresh air without the additional frustrations that would come with increased traffic and risks from hydro-fracking. We've all heard a wide range of opinions, differences in what has been, we've had differences in what we have heard and read. And certainly, we have varying expectations of our town officials, and we have different expectations of what every level of government should be doing in dealing with the rules, regulations, and enforcement. There are also differences in varying opinions as to our faith in government officials and in the big gas industry, certainly. We need not divide. We need not create further divisions amongst ourselves. It is that real sense. We must see the forest. Thank you.
Mr. Berger. Bergen? Okay.
Good morning. My name is Peter Burgevin. I live on Searsburg Road in the town of Hector. I want to thank you, board members, for being here this morning. I also want to thank the Protect Hector Citizens Action Committee for helping to organize this forum. I would like to ask you, board members, to enact a ban and/or moratorium on slick-water hydro-fracking within the town of Hector. We've heard lots of various reasons why that's important. One that's important to me that I wanted to share with you this morning was that the last summer, the DEC banned any slick-water hydro-fracking for the drinking water of New York City, with a population of 17 million people. Said it was too risky. If it's too risky for them, it's too risky for the 4,000 people living in the town of Hector.
Mr. Tamburelli.
Hi. My name is Joe Tamburello, and I would like to thank everyone for coming today, including the town board and everyone in the audience. I'm from the area originally, and I'm studying city and regional planning at Cornell. This issue means a lot to me as a resident and a future planner. I grew up on a blueberry farm that both my parents have worked hard to maintain. During the spring and summer months, we use up to 30,000 gallons of water to keep our crops irrigated. My father also uses water for wine production, and our dependency on clean water is critical. Recently, 230 acres of land next to us was sold, and the buyer, an out-of-state resident, would purchase this land for the, for the purpose of fracking. The trees in the woods bordering our land have been marked to be cut down. It's sad to see this happen, and I hope by sharing this, people will remain vigilant and pay attention to who is buying the land next to them. I've studied the effects of fracking, and the bottom line, it is not 100% safe. Furthermore, it's not a good long-term economic stimulus. When the dust settles, I promise you, none of us will be better off. Energy transitions are not fossil fuel dependent. We have to think about the future from the local to the national level. The future is not only an economic issue, but an environmental and social equity issue. Let's show commitment not, not only our futures as human beings, but the future of everything else that we share this earth with. You, the town board of Hector, have a choice, and it starts with you. Thank you.
The next three speakers, Linda Raoul, Ellen Steckman, Lou Damiani. Linda?
I'm sorry. I'm Linda. I'm going to seek my time. My neighbors are doing a great job.
Ellen Steckman.
Hello, friends and neighbors. I'd like to thank the board for arranging this meeting. Thank you very much. My name is Ellen Steckman, and I live on Tichna Road in Hector. And I am deeply concerned about the safety of our food and water and everything that we depend on clean water for. I work for Regional Access, a local food distribution company. We distribute food across New York State to restaurants, institutions, co-ops, small mom-and-pop stores, and farm stores, and buying clubs. One of our main objectives is to buy local food. We also support as many local farmers and growers as possible by selling and distributing many of their locally-produced products, including milk, cheese, yogurt, meat, local beans, local flour and grains, the staples of life. There's a growing concern from both farmers and consumers that if horizontal hydro-fracking proceeds in New York State, our food shed will be in serious jeopardy. Many of our customers are already showing resistance about purchasing food grown in Pennsylvania. This is a real concern, especially for us in this area, where we celebrate our first-class wine and amazing array of foods. Chefs from Marcellus formed a coalition to raise awareness about the threat, they say, the natural gas drilling technique posed to New York as most cherished institutions, its stomach. Many restaurants source their ingredients from farms and areas on or near the Marcellus shale, leading the chefs to fear that the groundwater would come, would become contaminated if fracking is allowed in New York State. This is real. Water is life. I urge you to take a stand to protect Hector and institute a ban on hydro-fracking. Thanks.
Lou Damiani.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, town board, for having this and hearing us once again. Let's just review the economics of the Finger Lakes. It's a multi-billion-dollar tourist industry. The centerpiece of that multi-billion-dollar tourist industry are the lakes and the wineries. Some estimates are $3.4 billion tourist industry in the Finger Lakes. This is primarily dependent on tourist dollars. Let's make no mistake about that. There are over a dozen wineries alone in Hector, many more close by, and many industries that support this, the food industries, the bed and breakfast, et cetera. Over hundreds of employees work for these wineries and various other tourist industries. Tourists do not have to come here. They are free to go wherever they want. We cannot have it both ways. Industrialize the area and lose your tourist businesses. There, you cannot have it both ways. You cannot have an industrial area and a tourist-based area. It's just not going to work. What we have here is renewable and sustainable, and we are able to pass it on to future generations. What we are talking about with this gas industrialization is many wellheads, many trucks delivering water and taking away frac fluid, gas pipelines, compressor stations. This is what we're talking about. We all need to be part of protecting the entire Finger Lakes, and Hector is an integral part of that Finger Lakes. Some of us think it might be the center of the Finger Lakes, but that's a little biased. Every winery I have talked to is against this, and I'm not here to speak for all wineries, but I have spoken to many of them, including, you know, the larger ones and the smaller ones. Nobody has come out for this, and even the ones that are sitting on the fence have grave reservations. Saturdays are the winery's busy days. That might be why there's a lower turnout than I had hoped for from wineries. It's hard for them to come on Saturdays. We will stand with the Hector Town Board in their fight against this. We will strenuously oppose if they support fracking. We will support you with votes, with finances, and in every way, having this fight. And you will be remembered in Hector today and tomorrow for doing the right thing. One little fact I will leave you with is the U.S. gas consumption is flat, zero. The Asian market has increased 44% from last year. This gas is destined for the Asian market.
The next three speakers, Thomas McKenzie, Lynn Stager, Margo Alexander.
Good morning. My name's Thomas Earl McKenzie. I live at 3980 Burn Hill Road in Burdette. You'll probably tell from my voice, I ain't from around here. I'd like to take y'all, thank y'all for taking the time to hear us out this morning. I'm coming at it from a different point of view. I've been through in South Alabama, where I'm originally from. In 2000, my wife and I bought a house in a area that we didn't know it was being gas-drilled. It was fracking going on all around us, and we got screwed, to say politely. We, we fought it for about three years, had a nice house, sell acres of land with it. We lost everything we had. And come to find out that everything that was done to us was legal, completely legal. Wasn't a thing in the world we could do about it. We moved. Doctor told me I had to find someplace clean to live, and this is a nice, clean place. And here we are, trying to fight it again. And I ain't going to put up with it this time. I'm here to ask y'all to ban this crap, use common sense. This ain't right. We don't need it in the area. We've got quite a tourism industry. If we start bringing this gas-drilling in here, you can hang that up. People are not going to come in here, where they got to get behind these trucks. And I don't know if you've ever smelled, smelled a gas well, and a lot of it's got hydrogen sulfide gas in it, so it smells like a rotten egg all the time. These tourists not going to come in here. And it just, just don't make common sense. I'm here to, to ask y'all to use common sense, and let's ban this junk, and forget about it. If anybody comes in here with a lawsuit, tell them to take it and stick it. That's what we need to do. Appreciate it.
Good morning. My name is Lynn Stager. I'm a resident and landowner, landowner in the town of Hector. I live at 5099 Route 228 and have lived there for the past 30 years. I am not willing to have my property raped by eminent domain if hydro-fracking is adopted. I am not willing to give up the peace and tranquility of our area for the sake of fossil fuel extraction. I am unwilling to have our landscapes destroyed by drilling rigs and pipelines, our roads plagued by heavy trucks, our lakes, creeks, and wells contaminated, our farmlands threatened, and our health and the health of our children and grandchildren compromised because of hydro-fracking. Regardless of the so-called strong environmental laws and vigorous regulations that the DEC insists they will monitor and enforce, accidents happen. Love Canal, Exxon Valdez oil spill, BP oil spill, Three Mile Island, just to name a few, were all accidents due to human error and system malfunctions. No one intended for these environmental disasters to occur. The DEC has proposed a ban on hydro-fracking near the Syracuse watershed and the Catskill Delaware watershed, which supplies water to New York City, because in the event of a malfunction, drinking water for millions of people would be contaminated. If hydro-fracking is supposedly so safe for us, why is there a concern for them? The argument that hydro-fracking will bring millions of dollars and potentially hundreds of jobs to New York State is propaganda. That word "potentially" should send up red flags. The gas companies already have employees who will be doing these jobs. And the gas companies are the ones who will be making millions of dollars, not us. The New York Times reported that companies that drill for natural gas have spent more than $3.2 million in lobbying and contributed hundreds of thousands of dollars to campaign accounts of lawmakers and our governor. Chesapeake Energy Company alone has spent more than $1.6 million over the past three years, lobbying and advertising. They wouldn't be investing so much unless they knew hydro-fracking would bring them enormous wealth. I urge the board members to propose a ban on hydro-fracking in the town of Hector. Use foresight, not tunnel vision. Don't let the promised dollar signs obstruct the view. There's no compensation for mistakes that will contam- There's no compensation for mistakes that will contaminate our wells, land, and waterways. We cannot put a dollar equivalent on pure drinkable water, fertile soil, pristine lakes, and quiet communities. Former New York State Health Department Commissioner David Axelrod stated, "Love Canal would long be remembered as a national symbol of failure to exercise a sense of concern for future generations." I urge you to avoid that fate for us. We need to be concerned for future generations. We need to be caretakers of the earth. Don't frac up New York. Thank you.
My name's Margot Alexander. I've been a resident and landowner in the town of Hector for over 20 years, where we raised our two sons. I want to thank you very much for taking the time to hear the citizens of the town. To me, the fundamental question is, what do we want our community to look like? And are the costs worth the benefits we'll gain from bringing hydrofracking to our region? No one questions the dire economic state existing for many in upstate New York. Failed farm policy has forced so many small family farms out of agriculture, leaving people desperately trying to hold on to tracts of land that have been in their families for generations. This I understand. However, environmental concerns about drilling, many of which you have heard and you will continue to hear all morning, including potential wastewater contamination to our drinking water, air pollution from waste lagoons and drilling operation, noise and light pollution as drills are dug and drilling operations happen, to name a few, as well as the stress on our infrastructure to our roads, and the housing market, where homelessness has become a prevalent concern in areas where it never was where drilling is happening. Who will help us when our water is contaminated, or there's an explosion causing widespread fire and environmental damage? 1,774 members of the DEC professional, technical, and scientific staff signed a statement stating in essence that the 25% cut in their staff has, quote, "crippled our ability to carry out all existing regulatory and statutory responsibilities assigned to our agency," end quote. If history is our teacher, we need only to look at the recent Deepwater Horizon oil spills. These companies have not willingly come forward to take responsibility for the environmental disaster that ensued, but are trying to lay blame on one another, and it's requiring government intervention to hold companies responsible, to pay reparation costs, and do what is right for the people in the golf course region. Further, companies have refused to release the list of chemicals used in the fracking process. Lists that have been attained are alarming to those of us in the medical field, due to potential health effects. Lastly, it's difficult to trust the gas and oil industry, who while touting energy independence to sell fracking in this area, are also applying for permits to sell this gas abroad. As we face and struggles as a community, essentially, we have one another to look to, to help us through these times. The oil and gas companies have no investment in our community. Our real strength and the possibility for a bright future lies in a healthy community, united for a common good. You have the power by imposing a moratorium, and then hopefully, a ban, to protect our environment and the people of this town. Thank you.